Is there anybody else out there?
Nobody else is standing.
Yeah, nobody else out there?
Only one down.
No, I'm in the room.
Okay, all right.
So about three months ago, Lynette Strathman, who's former -- I think you guys all know this, but I'll say it for the camera. Lynette's recently retired CFO of CJ Foods out of Burn. She's a numbers lady, right? So she started an economic impact study of taking into consideration various things in regard to what actually happens with wind industry in a county, in a rural, and especially in a rural county. So she's going to present that. But what she did is about a week ago, not quite a week ago, but send it out to a bunch of business leaders in the county to get their review of it, to let them go over it. Their CFOs or their various presidents, et cetera, CEOs, went over it. They dialogued back with Lynette on some questions they had, so they've reviewed it. And that group includes, in no particular order, Rand Schaefer, representing Lorchur Animal Science, is that the new name? Yeah. CJ Foods, that's 90 and 168 jobs. John Kinsey's here, ex, ex-former, sounds better, former CFO, not CFO, CEO of CJ. And then we have Will Eisenbison, Paul Winger, representing Winger Manufacturing Today. That's 300 employees in Winger and 80 at Extratech, right? Jim Renier could be here from USC. You talked about USC last week. That's 90 employees, and he's on board. Paul Cave is here, back in the corner. Paul, about how many employees at KSI?
We have about 56.
Okay. And they've reviewed it. Dylan Keim is here from Commercial Tire. Where'd you go, Dylan? There he is. And Dylan then contacted, in addition to his employees, several other businesses, smaller businesses here in the Seneca area. You want to -- well, I can just read the list. Your business, Golden Day Commodities, Hilltop Creations, Hemi, and actually Kathy's here from Hemi, representing another 20 or so employees there. C. Ray Anshel as well. And Brian Bergman from CW Mill has also reviewed it. They have about 39 employees, of which 70% live in Nima County. So that's a total of about 836 jobs that are represented in the report that Lynette's going to give you. So it won't -- she's all hers.
I printed off a book for you guys. I promise we're not going through the whole thing. It's just for you to review.
Okay.
Later, but we are going to walk through part of it. I apologize, I'll have copies for everybody. They're kind of expensive to put together. So I was the former CFO of CJ Foods. I retired in 2017. What I'm going to discuss now is just the Soldier Creek project, not the whole county. I am working on one for the whole county in the event that we end up with another wind farm that way. But this is just in reference to this expanded footprint, which is the first slide that you have. So what I tried to do, and I would ask if you have questions, I was going to just kind of hold it till the end, and then I'll try and fill them as best I can. So just a little bit along the way as a disclaimer. The assumptions are based off my calculations as objectively as I can, based on internet information, professional studies that I've looked at. And for the purpose of this discussion, any benefit is thought to benefit the entire county, and any cost is thought to affect the entire county, even though it's just a small portion of the county we're talking about as far as a footprint right now. But the economic impact affects the entire county. I also wanted to tell you that there's appendixes in the back. They're numbered, and so if you see a slide, that first slide says Appendix 1. There's a bigger map in the back that is referred to. So as you take this home and study it, you can see that as we kind of go. So the first slide is the map itself. That's the area I used in the analysis. We'll talk about the benefits first, and really, the benefit to Nima County is the money that's coming in. I can't think of a whole lot of other benefit. I've asked that question to several people. So we're going to talk mostly about money. So there's money that comes to the county in the form of a pilot payment. There is the road and bridge agreement, which, to my knowledge, doesn't include a payment to the county. It just is fixing the roads and bridges back to their better or original state. And then money to the landowners. Next era, published in the paper in August 10, 2018, and that's on the next slide, that says, "The Soldier Creek Wind Energy Center will provide an economic boost for Nima County, creating approximately 200 jobs during the construction phase and up to 20 full-time jobs to support the project once it becomes operational." The project's also expected to provide more than $50 million in payments to local landowners. Construction is set to begin in early 2019. And that was from Conlon Kennedy, the communications specialist with Next Era. So that's the basis of my analysis. So the annual payment of lieu of taxes, I quoted what came out in the Holton Requarter in May of 2018, that because Next Era already has an agreement with the county negotiated in '16, it won't pay property taxes on the wind farm for the life of the project. Tax legislation that went into effect in January of '17 reduces the tax-free period to 10 years. Instead, the company offers payments in lieu of taxes. And then they referenced the wind farm in Pratt that pays the county $1 million annually for the project's 20-year lifespan, from Spencer Jenkins. So I used a 300-megawatt project, 120 turbines. And I believe you guys are negotiating, I don't know this to be a fact, but I believe you're negotiating a great payment of $6,000 per megawatt, which is $1.8 million to the county, and that's what I used in this. Whether that's the actual number or not, I'm not sure. I did reference information from Betty Rader, who said the average of all Kansas pilot agreements in 2017 was 3,777 per megawatt, and shooting star at Tiowa was $6,667 per megawatt. So that's where I got the basis for 6,000, assuming that you guys will be able to negotiate, hopefully, that So 1.8 million is what I used in the assessment. Then the road and bridge agreement benefit, I don't know the details of what you're negotiating there, but I assume it's basically no cost to the county for any road improvements or bridge improvements that need to be made, and that all roads will be returned to current state or better following the termination of the project. So I did not calculate a cash payment to the county for the road and bridge improvements, and we're just going to all assume they're going to be better when they leave than they are right now, which necessarily might not be the case. If they weren't up north, anyway. So the next item is the landowner lease payments. Landowner payments do not go to the county. They go directly to the landowner. So with 120 turbines, at most, there's 120 landowners who will benefit from these payments out of a county population of over 10,000 people. The more realistic number, probably figuring there are multiple turbines on the same section, or multiple landowners with multiple sections, we're probably talking around 60 to maybe 70 owner units. Many of the landowners do not live in Nima County, and some of the landowners in the area will spend the money in Nima County, but others, especially absentee landowners, will vacation out or not make property improvements underneath the turbine. It's also closer to Holton and Topeka for shopping and activities. So in other words, the true benefit to all of Nima County from the landowner payments is much smaller than the payments that'll actually be received. However, I included the entire amount in the analysis. So $4,000 per name plate megawatt per year is what the lease agreements that I've seen show. Two and a half megawatt turbine, 120 turbines, is $1.2 million a year coming into the county. And by the way, if they're only paying $1.2 million a year, they would have to pay for over 40 years to pay $50 million, like they said before. I just wanted to point that out. The average lifespan's nowhere near 40 years. Permanent jobs. Based on the information from Indeed regarding Next Era's energy salaries in the U.S., the average for wind turbine technicians and field service engineers, the average annual salary is $57,000 and some change, times 20 positions, And if you take off taxes and benefits, the gross pay that's disposable income to the county, to the people of the county that would have those jobs, $857,000. And I think that's generous, because not all the jobs are going to pay $57,000 a year. At least locally, they don't pay that. Temporary jobs. As per the news release prepared by Next Era, there'll be approximately 250 to 300 temporary jobs. There are skilled jobs, skilled welders, concrete workers, and skilled laborers. I used 300 in the calculation. I calculated eight months, because the project's going to start early in '19, and Spencer said it would take about eight months to complete. So that's 67% of a full-time year. And I assumed that only 10% of the skilled positions would be filled by Nima County residents, due to the low unemployment rates in Nima County. Our annual unemployment rate here, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, is 1.2%. So the rest of the positions will be traveling workers hired by Next Era. I used average pay rates for those positions and assumed a generous 20 hours per week of overtime for the eight months. So the gross pay that would be allocated to Nima County residents would be a little over $1.4 million, and their disposable income from that, minus taxes benefits, would be $1,073,000. So I added that in as an income to the county. And then I calculated what was called trickle-down benefit of the employees that are not Nima County residents. These would be funds spent in Nima County by those people, non-resident temporary employees for goods and services during construction. There's a big concern there, that the majority of the disposable income from the temporary workers would be spent outside of Nima County, due to the project being located in the southern part of Nima County, and they would most likely go to Jackson County, Holton, or Topeka for gas and lodging and food and that type of thing. So, but I used 25% of the temporary worker's disposable income, and that came to a little over $3 million, and I added that in for a local business benefit, you know, if they rent a place for their camper here in town or something like that. So on the next page, Slide 13, is the total annual benefit to Nima County prior to calculating any costs to Nima County. And adding all of that up comes to the pilot payment, the temporary jobs, the permanent jobs, the trickle-down income, and the landowner payments comes to just shy of $8 million a year, 7.9. And I should say, this is in the first year. You'll notice there's a couple of those, the temporary jobs and the trickle-down income, that I asterisked. That's the first-year benefit only, because those temporary jobs will go away, and that trickle-down income will go away with it as well. And I'll address that at the very end, when I look at the 20-year impact. So what is the cost of the project, of the Soldier Creek project in Nima County? And the topics I would like to discuss are the cost to the county taxpayers. I'll just hit a little bit on property taxes not paid by the wind developer, the property value decline, the property taxes lost from the reduced property value, the agricultural impact, the lost sales to local business, and the community impact. So payment in lieu of taxes, property taxes. I want to read just a little bit out of the article that I sent out early in this little, when we first found out about the wind turbines coming to the county. I wrote a letter to the editor and asked people to read the article about the Kansas schools being short-changed. But Kansas offered a wind development, something no other state has done, lifetime extensions from local property tax. So instead of taxes, and often in return for site approvals, this is a quote from that article, "Kansas wind farms have agreed to make relatively small payments in lieu of taxes in all of those counties, but the pilot agreements do have one thing in common: none of them pay counties more than a fraction of what they would receive if the wind farms had remained on the tax roll. In fact, pilots in the wind farm counties this year, that was 2017, are expected to total somewhere between $12 million and $16 million annually. That's less than a fifth of the more than $82 million those counties would have gotten if the wind farms had paid property taxes like other businesses." So the next page shows the chart by county of how much we're missing in revenue. The property tax leaves untaxed for life, $630 million worth of equipment in Kansas wind, and this is as of 2017. And more than $32 million of that would have gone to rural schools. But we earned $12 million from pilots. So if you take the 70 million, or if you would have take the taxes that they should have paid, and what they paid in pilot, we still have $70 million on the table in the state of Kansas. So the Kansas public school system deemed constitutionally underfunded by the Supreme Court, thank you, relies on property tax revenue. And that's from that Flatland Study that I also attached in Appendix 2 for you. And you can see there, the huge disparity between the little tiny gray marks you can't see is what they got in pilot payments, and the orange bars are what they should have got in property tax. And I realize that's not your fault, and it's not our decision, but we have to live with it, and the county and the local taxpayers are funding wind energy. So the cost of the decision should be included, but I didn't include it. So the first year only, this is from Betty Rader, the county appraiser, to the, then I believe she reported it to you. The 120 turbines, the first year of property tax would have been $8.5 million. So if you took that over 20 years, we would have gotten $58 million. At $1.8 million a year in pilot agreement or pilot payments, we will recover $36 million, but that still leaves us $22 million short or different than if they'd have been taxed. I did not include that in the grand total at the end, but I wanted to mention it, because if they aren't paying local tax, it's lost opportunity for our county. There's no economic benefit. We talked about that earlier. The schools aren't getting better. The parks aren't getting better. The libraries aren't getting better. The county can't get Brad a new heater. I mean, there's a ton of money that's not coming into the county. And other local Kansas businesses, I mean, Nima County citizens pay for any tax incentive program that's out there. And to be fair, a lot of the businesses in this room, or a few of them anyway, have received tax incentive packages from the county. The difference is, they've had to bring new business in. They've had to guarantee a certain number of jobs, which Next Era has promised to do. But they're much, much smaller projects, and we start paying back, I say we, CJ's had one of them. We start paying back in year two. It's a declining 10-year tax abatement, is what it is. So the county starts realizing that, and in exchange for the new business, then is able to attract new businesses to the county. I can tell you that Nima County businesses would have never been granted a tax abatement by the county or the state if their project wasn't viable and led to growth. And I question, will these turbines actually attract any new business to the county that helped the county grow? But I did not, just to reiterate, I did not add this into the total number at the end. Okay? And then I ask a lot of questions about how it impacts our school funding, and I think we've already covered that. I know you guys have reached out to Dale Dennis. So reduction in property value. The most basic law of economics is that things are valued based on the law of supply and demand. It's exceedingly obvious, all things being equal, that many people, due to view, sound, flicker, noise, would choose not to buy a home where there are industrial wind turbines close by. Whether they're right or wrong is irrelevant. These beliefs would reduce demand, which clearly would have some negative impact on the price of the property. Any report that concludes there are zero negative property value effects related to wind projects simply cannot be considered seriously. The only real question is how much of an impact? And in Appendix 4 is where I put one of the reference guides for this. It has many different lines, many links to study this, an analysis and different people's opinions on the effect on property value. So I'm also aware that you guys have seen Michael McCann's report on property value from Adams County, Illinois, from 2010. And he says, anything with value, he sees residential value loss up to two miles from the nearest turbine. Most impacts are most pronounced within the footprint, making some houses completely unmarketable, depriving many homeowners of reasonable market-based liquidity and home equity that they've built up. But real estate sales data reveals a range of 25% to 40% of value loss, with some instances of total loss as measured by abandonment and demolition of homes. His report's attached in Appendix 5. There are three other references here of reductions, but the point I wanted to make is Ontario Superior Court says 22% to 55% reduction. The London School of Economics has a range attached here that shows they all decline in value. Las Vegas, Nevada, real estate appraisers found anything within two to three miles of wind turbines have seen their values decline from 25% to 60%. Those studies are also attached. So I feel like 25% to 60% seems to be the average. I used, on the Slide 23, the reduction in property value. The Nima County Kansas tax levy sheet provided by Mary I used a 20% reduction in rural areas and 10% in the cities, and that's, again, just within this footprint only. Based on their county valuations of $47.6 million, I use 20% for the rural and 10% for the city, which results in a net loss of value to property owners of $9 million. I want to clarify the rural part. I used a 30% split for residential and 70% ag, and then applied a 30% loss for residences and a 15% loss rate on ag for a blended rate of 20%. The studies that I referenced before all support those numbers. So the reduction in property value of $9 million is for all property owners in the footprint, and comes directly out of the equity they have worked for years to build up on their farms and homes and businesses. A 20% reduction on a $250,000 house, which I'd say is probably average anymore, is $50,000 in value. While participating landowners may recover all or part of that via their lease money, non-participating landowners are left with little or no recourse or way to recover the loss. This is also important, because the appraised values are used for loan agreements as collateral anytime you want to refinance a loan for anything, and these could affect the equity amount available to both personal and business uses, plus a direct impact when the property is actually sold. I'm also sure a non-participating landowner would rather pay increased property tax every year, because you would have to raise my taxes if I had a $250,000 house, $1,000 for 50 years to make up that $50,000. The next thing I looked at was property taxes lost by the county. So I just did the calculation on that $9 million in lost value, left us with $108,000 in lost property taxes to the county as well, and that would be over the course of Now looking at agricultural and environmental impact, why are bats important? I have to admit, I had to study this for a while, and I didn't think bats were that important to agriculture, but there are at least 1,000 studies out there on the importance of bats in agriculture. So a little brown bat, which has a body no bigger than an adult human thumb, can eat 4 to 8 grams of insects each night. And while it doesn't sound like much, the loss of 1 million bats in the Northeast has probably resulted in between 660 and 1,320 metric ton of insects, no longer being eaten each year by bats. So bats save US agriculture billions of dollars per year in pest control, and some studies have estimated that service to be worth over $3.7 billion per year, and possibly as much as $53 billion. Wind turbines kill between 690,000 and 900,000 bats every year. They can kill bats in two ways, by blunt force running into the blades, or barotrauma, which is basically the changes in the air pressure from the blades makes their little lungs explode. The reference for those are back in Appendix 8 and 9, and 10 and 11. The reason I have it in here is because the estimated annual avoided cost value of bats per state, and they have this per state, per county in the links, if you go back and look, that bats provide an average of $74.10 an acre of services to agriculture. The low estimate is $12.10 per acre, and the high estimate was $172.50 per acre. The study measured ag and small larva survival for specific insects and estimates of the value of crops that would have been lost in the absence of bats, and the reduced use of pesticides because of bats' predation on crop pests. This is old data from 2011. The yields have increased, costs have increased. I used, in my estimate, the very low minimum loss, taking the townships and expanded footprint, within six miles of each, because bats affect an area within 12 miles of each turbine, and did the math, and it came up to $2.4 million as the very minimum amount of impact. The wind, interestingly, the wind energy recently has had to adjust their sightings and learn to feather their turbine blades and to do increased startup and cut-in because of the bat issue. They've acknowledged there's an issue. The US Department of Agriculture is calling for changes in the way they start and stop their turbines. They're trying to reduce bat deaths by 30% or more. They've been legislated to do that. So you know it's a problem. It's not something that somebody just dreamed of. So $2.4 million on that. Other important agricultural impacts that need to be investigated further are the effects on wildlife, habitat, migration routes, birds, bats, pets, and livestock. I included two links on birth defects in cattle and horses that graze underneath the turbines. There's no way to quantify that at this time, but it's cautiony, I'm just cautioning that we should study that more. On the community growth impact, the lost sales to area businesses. I've done a little research, and I used five new homes at a minimum of $250,000. It's 1.25 million. Those are potential new home builds located in Corning, Centralia Wetmore, and rural areas. Corning's really got a growth spurt going on down there, so I don't think that's out of line. I also was made aware of by a local business that they have put a project on delay, a $2 million project, in the hiring of two to three new people. So I valued that at $2.2 million. That's within the footprint. So I think it's a conservative estimate. What other projects will be delayed or canceled, and what are the long-term effects of the decline on new house builds and commercial project expansions to our local construction and Main Street businesses? That value comes to $3.45 million. Under community health costs, this was the estimate presented by Laurie Menold, I think, right around Christmas time, of 1.45 million. I just took the population percentage of the footprint times her number to get the $519,000. So the tally sheet is the annual cost to Nima County residents, property value decline of $9 million, property taxes to the county on the property value decline of $108,000, the ag and environmental impact of 2.4 million, the lost sales to county businesses of 3.45 million, and health costs of $519,000. Total is $15.5 million. There are still other costs that I couldn't quantify yet. It needs more time to dig into, but I think there are things that you should consider, is the impact of the loss of wireless but I think there are things that you should consider, is the impact of the loss of wireless internet and cellphone service. The wind energy says there's no effects. The mobile phone system architecture is based on packet switching and redundant cellular towers, so in theory, if your tower's blocked, it's supposed to switch to another tower. Well, where I live, there's only one tower, so it's not going to help me any. Most of us are really only served by one tower instead of multiple points, resources common to higher population areas. Many people do not have landlines any longer, so cellphones have become vital for emergency, business, and personal communication. And I don't know if we've studied the impact on our emergency services, communication equipment for the county or the cities, such as ambulances, sheriffs, first responders, and the fire departments. Another thing to consider is the impact of the Accurate Weather Radar. Wind turbine is reported to cause clutter or interference that shows up on images produced by Doppler radar, which means they can't predict thunderstorm or winter storm characteristics or tornadoes as well. Appendix 12 has a report from the US Weather Department on that for you to read through from the National Weather Service. Local business costs that I haven't quantified yet is the impact on recruiting employees to the area. It's extremely difficult now to fill in new positions, and it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to attract them to an area filled with turbines. There's also turnover costs for local businesses, employees decide to move away because of the close proximity to wind turbines. The Society for Human Resources, SHRM, reports an average of 50% to 60% of the annual salary is the cost to replace and recruit and retrain a new employee. So, if you have a $30,000 employee, $15,000 per employee for each one you have to replace, and that's a cost of the local business. There's also some employers in the county who will lose some employees to the temporary work assignments with Nextera. That's just the nature of being in a low unemployment area. People leave to find a job that pays a dollar more. So, our local businesses will have to fund that. Someone pointed out to me that it could also have adverse, the adverse health effects could infect their employer-offered health insurance, which will create higher insurance premiums for those employers in the area. There is going to be an effect on local schools as people move away. I think you said done is $8,000 a head per student, something like that. But, again, if maybe somebody moves in, there'll be $8,000 for each one of those. There will be an effect on local TV and radio stations with interference, or there may be. And, I've been asked to speak to the local economic development groups in both Sbeth and Seneca, but what effect will that have on the businesses they're trying to attract to the community and the county, and what advantages there to the local business long term? I just think more time's needed to quantify these costs, and that we absolutely have to take care of our local business people. One other thought, agricultural impact for aerial applicators. Landowners should be aware, if they're considering placing turbines on your land or renting land that already has turbines, that obviously most aerial applicators would rather not fly around turbines because of the obvious safety issues. The total numbers of instructions are growing, so how many can you keep track of when there's 400 turbines in the county, or 120 in this area? And often, aerial applicators are called upon to protect crops in an emergency situation. So, during times like that, everybody wants their services at the same time, and if an applicator already has more work to do than he can get done in a day, highly obstructed areas will be done last if they're done at all. Many pesticides are only effective at specific growth and pest crop stages. If a grower misses an application window, those pesticides may not work and the crop can be lost. The ability to apply pesticides rapidly at their optimum time is a big advantage for aerial application. Since crop insurance won't cover the farmer in cases of insect or plant disease, where damage is due to insufficient or improper application of pest control measures, crop loss could lead to a significant financial loss for farmers. There will be dozens of fields that don't get sprayed, and if they do spray, get sprayed will probably, research is showing at least a 50% more cost. So, how many bushels of crops could be lost in yield because the inability to do aerial application? And I've attached several studies, again, in here. University of Illinois shows an 18.6 bushel per acre yield increase of corn treated properly versus untreated corn. All of these need further time to investigate. Then, decommissioning, I didn't want to assume that you guys had or were requiring assurance bond, but found out today that you have discussed that anyway. The 2017 Oklahoma College of Law study says decommissioning costs could easily be as high as $250,000 per turbine, less than $100,000 of scrap value, leaving a deficit of $150,000 per turbine to decommission. So, 120 turbines, $150,000, is $18 million. And I did not include that in the total, but I thought it needed to be considered in, and we've talked about it earlier. So, in summary, the net economic impact on Nimaah County residents for the Soldier Creek Project only for the first year, we have income of almost $8 million, and we have costs of $15.5 million, which is a net negative impact of $7.6 million. Remember, I use very generous in numbers on the income and very conservative estimates on the cost. Many additional costs are not factored in. Decommissioning costs are not included, nor is the property tax not paid by wind energy. As a business owner and as a CFO, if our business was looking at a project that had a negative $7.6 million return on investment or payback, I can assure you, we would never do that project, and I doubt any business in this room would. The second year, I took out the asterisk jobs, the income, you know, that was just for the first year, and I also took out the impact to the property value, because that's a one-time hit. I included 2% inflation adjustment and a 2% increase on the income that was being received, which, just to be generous, we still have a net negative impact of $2.67 million in the second year. And if you go to the 20-year, since the wind energy companies claim they run 20 to 25 years, I used 20. I think data shows it's more like 15, maybe. But, the 20-year net economic impact on Nimaah County residents for the Soldier Creek Project only, so year one is $7.6 million in the whole, year two is $2.6 million in the whole. Net for the years three to 20 are $58 million in the whole. So, we have a net negative impact of $68 million over the next 20 years, including an increase 2% of revenue and a 2% adjustment for inflation, but not including decommissioning or the sales tax not paid. So, my final question or ask is that when taken all together, using conservative estimates, the cost of this project to Nimaah County far outweighs the benefits to Nimaah County residents. It's not an economic windfall to the county like Nextera implied. And I ask, can you or any citizen support a project, or any business for that is very likely to be an economic burden to the county for the next 20 or more years? So, we're in this together. Please consider the net, long-term net economic cost of the project and consider a moratorium on further developments until all of the costs can be weighed in the right path of action can be determined. This decision will affect Nimaah County residents for generations. If you have particular questions, I would be glad to meet with you, one-to-one or as a group later after you've studied what I put together. I'd be happy to answer any questions then, but that's what I asked.
Okay, great, thanks, Lynette. You did a bunch of work, very nice. Thank you.
I hope it makes a difference.
Just last comment, just make sure that you remember that there's 850 jobs represented in this room by people that have reviewed that exact report and subscribed to it, so business leaders that have done that.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
The footprint that you have asked Nextera to provide, is it just only in that original source, or does it include all the land they have leased?
We don't know.
It would be where their proposed farm would go, and we don't know where that is exactly.
Once that data is available, how difficult would it be to run your numbers again once that footprint is available?
It wouldn't be that difficult to update it once I know exactly. I use the purple and red right there as well. So, if it's, you know, significantly different, I just have to make a few tweaks. I could rerun it if they wanted me to.
And that property value devaluation was based on the homes that are currently in that area, is that right?
Yes.
And you had a few, what'd you have, four to five new projected?
Yes, new homes in the lost oak business, yes. I had five new homes projected. Corning's growing very rapidly for a small town. I wonder if they'll continue to do that since the turbines will be right around them.
Do you have one of these that you could leave here or in Mary Kay's?
I have one more copy I can leave for Mary Kay.
Just for public, if anybody from the public...
Right, right.
Yeah, I would be glad to do that. They're like $20 some dollars to print off. I only made five.
Don't blame you, Lynette. Any other quick questions for us or Lynette from her presentation?
I would say, Gary, there are several business people that took part of their day out to be here. If any of those guys have any quick comments, I know you've been there a long time already, but they've made the trip and taken time away.
Sure. Floor's open, quick.
I'll make the quick comment. I'm not usually bashful to talk. I see this, personally, I see this as a county team here, and as a business owner, I would be very skeptical to put all my eggs in one basket. I think my comment would be, is the value that we bring with individual smaller businesses and what they do long-term, if something goes wrong. If I had one customer, this case, if I had one customer and he didn't fulfill his promises, 10 years down the road, I'd be out of business. But, if we have many customers like this county's blessed with as far as industry base, there's a lot of value in that, that we really need to evaluate, so that we don't limit the potential growth we've got for other new businesses that are coming in or would like to come in that are smaller, but benefit long-term sustainability. I just want to make sure that we consider that as a group, as a county, as a family or as a community, that we don't put all our eggs in one basket to the benefit of a few dollars.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
I'm just going to go along with what Paul said there. I mean, if you look at the Department of Commerce's own numbers, they'll say that a primary industry will generate a five-time impact to whatever that primary sales is. That's a company that brings in dollars from outside the community into the community, and then it's recirculated. So, Department of Commerce in Kansas, five times the impact if it's a primary industry. So, there's a recirculation factor. Every industry in here, so you look at Sabathia, if you're close to, you know, close to $800 million, a billion dollars in primary sales, that's a $5 to $7 billion economic impact. If you use Nebraska, it's seven times. That's what Department of Economic Development in Nebraska would say, seven times, right? Just doesn't have that. There's no primary business thought process that goes into that, so that's one. And two, you really have to think about the fact that each of these competitors that are in this room together are here because we're at a less than 2% unemployment. Full employment, according to, you know, Department of Labor, is over 5%. So, you're at 2%, we're already competing for jobs, we're already trying to be in a situation where we have the ability to attract employees and keep employees. It's difficult. Turnover is huge in a lot of these companies, especially at the lower-end positions inside of those that are required. So, when you add a factor like this, where you have the potential for a serious impact in attracting labor or keeping labor, it's a major impact to your primary industries that are your economic engine already in the county. It's a huge consideration, okay? And the third thing I'd just say, and Brad would probably mirror this as well, if you think about what John Sturrock Mills said, when he said on liberty, that in a room, I mean, individual rights are like people inside of a room trying to open umbrellas, okay? A crowded room trying to open your umbrella, and you should be able to open your umbrella to the point that you don't infringe on somebody else's ability to open their umbrella. If you think about this situation, certainly there are people that have their umbrellas fully open. They have the ability to gain a tremendous benefit from this objective. But then, there's a lot of people that can't open their umbrella at all because they don't get the economic benefit, and they're really limited already on what the rules and regulations are for them to protect their rights. It's the individual right and the minority right that we have to protect in America. It's not the majority right. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
It's not so much a question, Lynette, petition the Board of Commissioners, you gentlemen to do a six-month memorandum, stay on this, or do a moratorium to look at it a little bit deeper? Are you guys willing to take a vote on that this afternoon while we're in here to do that, to further look into it a little bit deeper? The financial aspects, some of the things that were brought up before, also the health and welfare effects, but also some of the other things from Nextera to just kind of put a stay and really just look on that, not negotiate anything further, just put a stay on it. I can tell you in business, I do a lot of negotiating, and it's very tricky and dark. And so, when we negotiate on certain items, you want to know everything that's possible that's out there, so you can further your position. And I think there's a lot of unknowns that were brought to me about this, better negotiate if, you know, the county wants to do this, to get more income out of it, offset some of these things, and maybe give her more time to allow to look at that before we set down a pilot agreement with Nextera, you know? Because you come back at them again, not going to be there as friendly, these people aren't renegotiating. Usually, when you renegotiate, it's the tiny little hills, not the big details. And a lot of times, if you come back with something totally different, they're going to come back at you with bad faith arguments to match it, and that may force you to do something. So, I would, I'd almost go to stay and kind of look at all of the known rules and really look at it in that way, especially when you get a deal and you get in a real good negotiation. Brad's an attorney, he's probably done mediation with different companies or individuals, and you really get going hot on something, and sometimes you forget about A and B and thinking it's E, and sometimes it's good to step away for a little bit, put all the cards on the table again, take a deep breath, think about what was I trying to accomplish here, and then reengage with something. Are you guys willing to take a vote on it for the county's point to put that stay on there for six months and reevaluate some of these things? And that's what all of us business owners here are doing, are looking at too. We're all kind of emphasizing, maybe we should look at this a little bit deeper and just kind of slow down just a little bit, just to look and make a very, very educated decision before we go into this.
There's another thing that concerns me, and that's a study there basically on the expanded pilot area. They've leased, they have leases filed and recorded, as I understand it, in all 20 townships. So, there, I think you need a program, if Lynette could some way expand her study to incorporate the entire county, so that you can really see what the future effect is going to be on this.
Well, I've started it, but I don't have enough information on the pony... Well, I've started it, but I don't have enough information on the Pony Express project, which is three hundred turbines recorded.
This footprint that we keep talking about, I can't imagine why they would have been out here. Why would I have taken an added cost to my company to lease land that I didn't anticipate I was going to be able to utilize? I have the feeling they're going to come in here someday and they're going to lay all the leases on their desk and say, hey, here, how can you argue with all these landowners? And that footprint's going to get as big as the county.
Other questions and/or comments? If we was to put a moratorium on, does anybody in here feel like we have a chance of making? And they bring one hundred and twenty lawsuits against us. Does anybody in here feel like we can win that?
Dennis, let me answer that. Now, I've been just a little player down there in the southeast corner of this county. I've had to defend myself against AT&amp;T. I've had to defend myself against the Bell Telephone System. I've had to defend myself against IRS twice and won all of them. Now, don't tell me you can't do it.
I didn't say you couldn't do it. I'm just asking if anybody feels like we got a fighting chance because of the regulations and what resolutions we have in place. I agree, as a business owner, Bob and I, I've been in the same situation. I fought the IRS. I fought a lot of different people and won many of them, but...
I guess I have to go back. I love your analogy. And I think I tried to make that care of when I first kept in this room several weeks. I know there's landowners out there that I don't want to try to do. I'm not really interested in seeing that they don't get to reap the benefits of all these tax funds that we've... But you've got to think about the people that can't or aren't going to have anything to say about it. You know, if I had the land and I sign it, and I find out afterwards that I can't stand to live beside that damn thing, that's my fault. I'll use another approach. I found out, and I didn't realize this, but understand the Flint Hills is exempt from all this. Well, I assume somebody's put it in their mind, hey, I want to sit on my porch and look out over the Flint Hills and enjoy the beautiful scenery. I want to do the same damn thing. My scenery off my deck is just as valuable to me as anybody living next to the Flint Hills.
Or is winning, you know, I guess something when you think of the government's here to protect the people, and Niemaha County is the control. They are the power. You guys are the board, you're the head. You represent us. Will it county and the people in the county support you and fight it? You learn rightly well because we're in this together. But, you know, if they come after you for that stay, what is that saying about their character, their company? And do we want to deal with someone like that if we want to take a step back to look? We're not saying we're not going to do it, and we're not saying we're going to do it, right? What we're just saying is we want to look at this a little bit deeper. And if they're going to sue us for it, maybe that reveals some character of them. But, you know, something to think about too, us as Americans as a whole, is, you know, ask your grandfather, it would be my great-grandfather, your grandfathers, when they went into World War II, they think they're going to win that? Most of them didn't. They think they're going to come out alive. Most of them didn't. But why'd they do it? Because it's the right thing to do, right? Take care of their families, their government, their people, and they put their lives on the line. And that's what we've always stood for as Americans, right? And so those county commissioners are asking you to stand for us to look at this and just step back and look at our health and welfare and the finances of us businesses. What is good for us? And just stop for a second. You know, we're not saying yes, we're not trying to tell you no. We're just saying, let's stop and look at this for a little bit. Let's not get in a rush, you know? Whether we're going to win a fight or not, so be it. But you know what? They're going to be here for eight months and leave. We're going to be here for a lifetime, generations. My generations are going to be here. I mean, Gary Scobie, you drove me on the school bus. You knew I could be on, and you made me sit up front, so, right? I mean, I went to school with your children. Your children has married, you know, some of our family members, and we're all in this together. So if we're very clear with what's going on and the actions that are, nobody's going to fight you or be mad at you with what happens. But we can't worry about them. We can only worry about ourselves and what's best for us and not for them. So that's why Lynette did this, that's why we're all here. We're concerned for each other. And that's why I asked if you guys would, one of you would make a motion to do such a thing and then vote on it. And we've got, I mean, we've got some very large corporations here. I mean, I'm the small fish in the big pond here, but for these guys to take some time out of their day is a pretty big deal, so...
Well, I'd like to think that we as commissioners haven't rushed anything, nor will we ever rush anything until we are... What's the word I want to use? We're just not going to rush anything.
So with that said, Gary, can I ask why a lawsuit would be, why you fear that? Because obviously you must feel like you're in jeopardy.
Here's what, and maybe I should have voiced this a long time ago. This is all about property rights to me. Property right says that you have the right to use the good. You have the right to transfer it to others. You have the right to enforce property rights, and you have the right to earn an income from it. And I think that's probably, correct me if I'm wrong from a legal standpoint, what Nextera will stand on. That property right that a guy has that bought the quarter years ago, and I'll be honest with you, I went broke buying it. And my wife and I both ended up in town working jobs because we couldn't pay for it. We struggled to get it. So that property right to me to earn an income from it runs pretty deep.
Does that right to the good apply to non-produsive waters as well?
That's the somewhat gray area.
Gary, why does zoning exist then? Why is there any zoning at all if that universal statement is true?
Well, that's a good question.
I mean, zoning exists to protect rights beyond the property right owner. There's use, obviously, but you can't put a nuclear dump site. You can't put hog, I found out in Pawnee City myself, right? People get mad when you do that south of town, I guarantee you. I mean, there are certain limits to the rights, and it comes back to that idea of, hey, I can use my land and create an income as long as I do it within a framework that protects everybody else's interest that's reasonable. It comes back to the reasonable man's standard.
Well, and you're right. Have you been in any zoning dispute? That's what it comes down to, my right to do with my land to the point where it does not interfere with somebody else's right to enjoy theirs. And you've got to balance both of those, and I think that's what you're talking about, Gary, is you're having to balance those.
It's a hard question. I'm not saying I want to sit there. I want to sit there.
When we start talking zoning, and I can tell you, there's no venue in this courthouse that would work for it. This room surely wouldn't. The courthouse wouldn't.
Probably.
The middle school gym probably wouldn't. But anyhow, it's a very controversial thing.
But the times are changing as well. So back when initial zoning was put into place, of course, nobody, no landowner wanted to be told what they couldn't and couldn't do with their land. But we didn't know about 500-foot industrial wind turbines at the time. You know, just like the state now regulates hogs, they didn't use to. I think that we have to take into account what's changed. You can't just set a law. Women wouldn't be moving anymore. You know, there's just, everything changes, so you have to look at it from that point of view.
There are, of course, lots of considerations for zoning, period. And one of them is the cost. And with that cost, that increased taxes to...
I realize there's some legal costs there, but I talked with the Wobunse County Attorney about how hard it would be to implement zoning in a county that doesn't have zoning. And his opinion, which might be different, you know, than yours, was it's relatively easy if you can find a county that already has a zoning policy in place that you would agree with, or you could tweak, his word, tweak, to fit Niemaha County. And then you'd have to appoint a planning or zoning commission and appoint people to that, and then you start zoning.
Oh, it can be done.
But it's not that long and, you know, I think it's too big publication time. It doesn't have to be a long and drawn out. And I would bet people's opinion of zoning has changed in the last couple of years. Because, you know, you can still write zoning laws so that you don't limit building a shed on your own farm, but you can limit structures over 100 foot or something like that.
But we had zoning in Pawnee City for commercial, I mean, industrial. You have zoning already. Why? Because we create noise, we create smell. You don't want a pet food plant next to your house. I just guarantee that, okay? And they don't have that in Burn, and trust me, over the years, that's created issues in Burn for that very issue. You live in Burn, you accept that, right? Well, would it have been better if zoning existed from the very beginning in that arena? Certainly. I mean, it would have been great to have an industrial area. But Burn's a town of 200, and they clearly didn't have that thought process when they started things, and then built the first plant on Main Street, right? We didn't know that. But as we've grown and we've matured as businesses and communities, we've learned, we've got to have separate areas for separate things just so we're better neighbors. Because otherwise, people will go crazy. And I think in this case, because of the huge impact, you know, pursuit of happiness, that's what we're really talking about. I mean, can you sit on your porch? Can you overlook a prairie and say, hey, I love that view with a windmill there? Yeah, at some point, far enough away, you probably can. But when it's right there and it's making noise and it's impacting your quality of life, that's a serious thing, even though it's hard to quantify. Lynette did a great job, I think, putting the numbers together. But at the end of the day, it clearly, nobody here will dispute it has an impact at some point. So I think we're all reasonable, and we're all saying, hey, let's make sure that it's far enough back that the very people that get no economic benefit, actually a negative benefit, if you're going to go that far, and say it's okay to pursue this particular line of thinking, that at least it's far enough back that their quality of life, their pursuit of happiness, isn't impacted. But even more than that, I think what you had said is really true. I mean, why not study it? You don't have to be wrong to get sued. That's a universal law of law, right? You can get sued and be completely right. And people do it as a tactic. Well, there's other tactics. And it is a negotiation. Only you never feel bad taking time to evaluate something. And if they sue you, they sue you. Doesn't mean you'll lose. And it means at some point, there's still a negotiation opportunity after the initial papers are delivered. It's not over. Once they deliver papers, you're not bound to anything, and there's always time to work those things out. So, I mean, Brad, you've studied this, and clearly you have an attorney that's also studied this. I'm not an attorney. But just because you get papers issued to say, hey, we're going to sue you, doesn't mean it's all over.
Lawsuits are...
It's just sort of people who do stuff.
Business, yeah. That's what businesses conduct a lot nowadays, is to go lawsuits.
And don't forget, the other way this could happen is they start putting up windmills, and we have to sue them.
Yeah, exactly. There's the other factor. Or you get residents in the county and Nextera and the landowner. I mean, there's, we're good. It'd be good to raise your sons if they're in high school, be attorneys here, please. But it's going to happen. I mean, the courts are going to be filled, one way or the other. It's, that's just what's coming down the pike. Big things bring big problems, so...
The whole objective is so that our country can continue to open their umbrella.
I would just share this. I'm from, I, we started a business. I'm a first-generation business owner, and I really appreciate the support the county gave me. But as I look back at some of my economic development numbers, they are different than these numbers. I would have hated to sit across the table and ask for an abatement with numbers that look like this because I don't think I'd have got them either. That's the only thing I'm going to say. I think from the perspective, I hope that you can treat the industries that we have in town with the same respect, or this one, the same respect you wanted from us as smaller businesses. I just think that's only not asking too much when you look at the economic development, the economic numbers of it.
Well, I'm not perfect. And I think I can speak for Dennis and Tim. We're going to do the best thing we can do. That's all I can say. We're going to do the best thing. Hopefully, it turns out that it's the best thing for everyone in Niemaha County.
It's not going to be. You know it, and I know it. Somebody's going to be pissed when this is all over with, whether it's you folks or the landowners. Not hard to figure out.
I can't hardly believe there's that many landowners that would be pissed, though.
Whoever signed up for it is probably going to be if it gets killed. So, I mean, it doesn't matter how you look at it, somebody will be.
I'm not sure if they're, if they properly educate themselves, I'm not sure you're right.
You may be right, Bob.
Their fate, I believe very strongly that if it comes to the fact of taking these things down, it's going to be the landowner going to... Because if I've got this whole thing wrapped up in one little LLC, I'm going to take that LLC to bankruptcy.
And, you know, we can discuss a lot of things, and we have for the last six to eight weeks. And until we get hard numbers from them people, I agree with you. I don't mind, I wouldn't, I'd do that in a heartbeat. I want to see what they're going to throw at us first. We can put the brakes on them, just like you said. They're dancing a little bit, that's fine. I ain't scared of them people. I never have been scared of them people. I've heard people in here talk about being scared of them. There ain't any of us scared of going to a lawsuit. We're going to do the smartest thing in Niemaha County, and we'll get some good information right now from Niemaha County, in my opinion. Great information. Now, we're going to use it to the best of our ability. Until, we won't make a decision until we see the numbers. And once we see the numbers, then we'll get some more input from you guys.
Okay. I think you give us plenty of window there.
Rest assured, we will have plenty of window.
If they've got an opportunity to step on us, they probably will, don't you imagine? That window may just get closed, and we won't like it. I don't know. Can they just, being they have enough land leased up, can they just start planting them things without our blessing? Possible. We don't know where that's all going yet, but we're damn sure going to put the brakes on things if they think they're going to do that. So I guess we're not, we're trying to listen, but you're not getting the answers from us, and you guys somewhat get frustrated, I think, from that, but we can't give you the answer yet. I guess that's my opinion.
Very well said.
Your voice will be heard all along the way.
I feel like we've let everybody's voice be heard. And I got in hot water because I said, well, I kind of discouraged the other people from coming. What reason was there for them to come? And, you know, you said they should be here. Until we got numbers, what reason? Until we have hard numbers to throw back at everybody, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, you guys are all coming on a weekly basis now. You feel like, oh, you're taking time off your work and everything. I understand all that, but in the end, until we have a hard number, you can keep coming, but until we have a hard number to throw back at you, it's kind of a waste of time. Today, I don't think was a waste of time. I really think it was a great meeting today. One of the best we've had in several weeks, because we learned a lot. And it's from, you know, the business owners... And it's from, you know, the business owners in Nima County, and that's what we needed to hear. There is a different side to this thing, too.
Do we know when we can expect this term sheet?
We've heard, I mean, we, you know...
James alluded to possibly this week.
Well, not the term sheet.
Oh.
He's hoping to receive...
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right.
Numbers per se, us to look at.
Engineering plan.
The footprint.
And the footprint, hopefully, before Monday, but as far as...
Right. Thank you, Brad.
I wished, and I don't know who we could have, I wish Mr. Neal would have been here for this. I really do. You know, I wish this, we knew this was coming. We could have pushed this to the front while he was here, because this is really good stuff.
Tim, what if you, what if Lynette supplied another book for him? And then just ask him to watch the video.
You have an extra one. You said, why?
I have one I can leave with.
We can mail it, Tim.
But I mean, he's...
I think it'd be good for him to look at this for next week, that's for sure. Because there's a lot of good information.
Or you have this on some sort of computer document.
I have a, yeah, I have a PDF file with this.
Because if we could just email it.
Maybe we could do that, you know, because I really think he needs to see this, you know?
Do you want to send it to me?
And then when you do a moratorium and stuff, well, a vote on this this afternoon. I want him sitting here when I'm doing that. I want his input, you know, for a moratorium or whatever.
He needs to be here.
You know, really. So, maybe we can talk about that next week a little bit, you know, with him.
Table it till next week, maybe.
I was, I'm, my own personal feeling is they're going to drag their feet another week. Yeah, we're going to do something. That's just my own opinion. I'm ready to do something. They're dragging their feet for some reason I ain't got to figure it out. And I don't care if they're a big company, little company, don't matter. You know, they're doing something, what? Give us the numbers. They got them. They've had these, in my opinion, they've had these numbers since they got go. Now, they just want to hear all this conjecture and then come back at us at a different angle, probably, so that's just...
I heard, remember, they were publicly talking about it, so...
That's what I've heard, too, and I wasn't, you know, whatever.
So, they have them.
Yeah. But like I said, I think they've had these numbers. They know each project, how much they're going to give you out. They just know that ahead of time, but they're not going to tell you. All the almighty tax dollars.
So, we will, next week, I think Mr. Neal will probably plan to be here again at nine. I think we can say that. We'll probably...
I will probably be at least 45 minutes with him again. Maybe longer. I mean, I don't know. We, we'll probably set at 10 o'clock, but if it happens to take us longer with him because of some of these numbers coming back, don't get discouraged if it's 10:30.
I think we have a problem with later and earlier than this.
We won't go earlier. We'll be on 14. I would assume 10 o'clock, but if it happens to go a little longer than that with him, it's possible.
It won't be the 4:10, put it that way.
Tim, will you tell us when we need to be here?
Well, I guess...
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Do we need to be here next week or the week after?
Oh, wow.
How do we know?
Well, that, you questioned why we're here and saying we're wasting our time.
I didn't say he's wasting your time. No, 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 no. Words in my mouth. I don't think I said you were wasting, did I say I was? No.
Maybe that was the implication, or maybe that's the way I perceived it.
I've heard this before, looking right at that thing, and then they start critiquing what I say. Now, let's don't do it right in front of us.
Okay. It may or may not be, that's the way I perceived it. Maybe I perceived it incorrectly, and I'll take ownership of that.
No. That's up to you whether you think you're going to learn something next week. I have nothing. We may not have anything again next week. I'll put it that way.
Okay, so...
That's your decision.
Again, I've said this before, the reason when you question why we kind of, or why I kind of speak for myself, I wasn't here back in 2016, was some decisions were made. And I'm going to try not to allow that happen again. So, that's...
That's your baby. I mean, we're not here to say wrong, yea, nay, but when I get questioned whether or not the other side of this table ought to be here, too, it's their business. I don't tell them not to be here. I just tell them, you're not going to learn anything, per se. Till you get numbers out there, how much you learn from the numbers? You've asked us now six weeks in a row, what's the setbacks? What's this? We can't give you the damn answer yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I didn't ask, but I wanted to be...
Somebody has. I mean, almost every, on a weekly basis, we've had those questions asked to us, and we can't answer it. We can give you a hypothetical. Does that go anywhere? Probably not.
And I understand that. I think I've understood that from the beginning.
Okay.
To your comments about what would it benefit if the other side, if that's where we are, and I don't know that we are. I don't know that we're two sides. I hope, hopefully, we're not there yet. But what to gain, what is, in my opinion, to gain by that is hearing another perspective maybe would improve my perspective. And I...
You haven't talked to any of them?
Not very, not very many. Just, I don't know that it's my place to go and engage in that conversation. I don't, I don't want to come across as...
Sure.
Pushing my views on someone else, but I'm certainly interested in hearing another perspective, and I suspect everyone in this room is.
Well, the other part of that, too, is, is that they pretty much put a gag order on anybody that signed the lease.
It's hard for them to say.
They put a gag order on them, but not to talk about the financial part of it, I think. The rest of it, I think they can pretty well talk about.
It kind of covers everything the way that I read it.
Kind of does, Dennis. I mean, I don't know if they're supposed to talk down about next era, per se, but I haven't read one of those contracts, so I don't know. Maybe I should have. I'm trying to stay like this, so why would I want to know one way or the other? I want to know, I want to stay in the balance of that. I want to, I want, I want to make sure we're taking care of them. I want to make sure we're taking care of you. That's how I look at it.
Kind of like the app produced, and, you know, the pluses and minuses, you know? What are the pluses? What are the minuses? What, what do we have? There's a lot of things unknown. What are the, what are the landowners going to do with the 50 million or whatever they get? I question the 50 million myself, but what are they going to do with that? Are they going to buy a new pickup from each one of the dealerships and trade every year? You know, because they got money now? I don't know. You know, I mean, are they going to? It's hard to tell.
A lot of it don't.
You know, they may want to get into the pilot business and come out and buy KSI out and relieve him of his problem. But, you know, I mean, you never know what, what that economic, but I will tell you, I did have a conversation with a banker, not from Seneca, and he said he was a banker in western Kansas when they brought a wind farm in there, and he said he had two farmers that absolutely, they give them three years. And said, if you don't make it, if you ain't got your ducks in order in three years, you're going to get sold out. And the wind farm came in, and it saved all. He said, so, I will tell you, there is some benefit from that for them people.
I included the whole 1.2 million in there.
Yeah, I know. But that's what I said, though. That's...
I understand that. There are people that will benefit. And honest, it's hard to argue against that.
Sure.
There's a few percentage of people that really need the money, but I think somebody else brought it up once before. I started planning for retirement when I started working. I'm sure you did, too. So, to just have a windfall and say that's my retirement, well, I don't necessarily buy that.
Well...
I understand it's hard, and last year particularly was very hard to be a farmer.
You know, I think back...
Thank you very much. That's a lot of good information.
I think back at, you know, and some of our, I think back to my dad especially, you know, when, when I made the election when I was a senior in high school, not to stay and run the dairy, because I was the youngest of the family, and I could stay and run the family, and I could do the farming, and I could run the cows, milk cows the rest of my life.